I'm sorry, we have only five missing. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, December 7th, 2004. If I can ask everybody to please come to order. And Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grohl, Hahn, Labange, Ludlow, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Viergosa, Weiss, Nine, Padilla, ten members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
All right, well, welcome back, everybody, after a break of a week. First order of business, approval of the minutes?
Approval of the minutes.
Okay, Mr. Reyes moves, Mr. Parks seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Okay, Mr. Ludlow moves and Mr. Labange seconds.
Mr. President, this is Tuesday. Do you wish to do the flag salute?
Yes, we would love to do a flag salute, thank you, and I would like to ask everybody to please rise in chambers, and I want Mr. Labange and Mr. Ludlow to do their duo team of a salute, thank you.
Thank you very much, and Mr. President asks us all to raise, put our hand over our heart, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow and Labange. Next order of business, please.
Mr. President, this is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Okay, for general public comment, I'd like to invite Forward, and we will be taking up the airport today, so folks who want to speak on that, there are cards to fill out, but this is general public comment on items that are...
I'm sorry, we have only five missing. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, December 7th, 2004. If I can ask everybody to please come to order. And Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Cardenas, Garcetti, Grohl, Hahn, Labange, Ludlow, Misakowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Villarosa, Weiss, Stein, Padilla, ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
All right, well, welcome back, everybody, after a break of a week. First order of business, approval of minutes?
Approval of the minutes.
Okay. Mr. Reyes moves, Mr. Parks seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Okay. Mr. Ludlow moves, and Mr. Labange seconds.
Mr. President, this is Tuesday. Do you wish to do the flag salute?
Yes, we would love to do a flag salute, thank you. And I would like to ask everybody to please rise in chambers. And I want Mr. Labange and Mr. Ludlow to do their duo team of a salute. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. President asks us all to raise, put our hand over our heart, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Ludlow and Labange. Next order of business, please.
Mr. President, this is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Okay. For general public comment, I'd like to invite forward. And we will be taking up the airport today, so folks who want to speak on that, there are cards to fill out, but this is general public comment on items that are not before us, but within our jurisdiction. Cecil Carpio, Robert Silverstein, Mary Hernandez. If the three of you would like to line up and speak, go ahead. Thank you.
Yes, good morning. My name is Cecil Carpio. I'm just here to say that I'm looking forward to watching the mayoral race. Bernard Parks, we have Villarosa, et cetera, at all. And I look forward to hearing a candidate finally say not only no to LAX expansion, but hell no to LAX expansion. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert Silverstein. Mr. Silverstein.
Honorable council members, my name is Robert Silverstein. I'm an attorney with Hill, Fair, and Burl. I represent the Florentine Gardens located at 5951 Hollywood Boulevard. I am here today to ask each of you to save the historic Florentine Gardens from being destroyed for a new fire station. The Florentine Gardens is an icon of Hollywood. It helped establish Hollywood as the world's entertainment capital. It opened in 1938, and it is the last remaining nightclub from Hollywood's golden age. Far from being an eyesore or blighted, it is an active and valuable part of the community. It has been designated as a historic landmark by the Los Angeles Community Redevelopment Agency. The 5,000-member First Presbyterian Church of Hollywood, which is a neighbor of the Florentine Gardens, opposes the destruction of the Florentine Gardens for a fire station. It may seem unusual that a church is so actively supporting a nightclub, but that is the case here because the Florentine Gardens is such a valuable member of the community. And I will hand a letter to the clerk from the church in support of the Florentine Gardens. The Florentine Gardens has been the subject of a site-selection process for a proposed new fire station, Fire Station Number 82. And the most serious concern that we have about that process, which has led the Florentine Gardens to be the target of this potential acquisition, is that two individuals who are instrumental, have been instrumental in pushing the Florentine Gardens for demolition, and who are members of the Hollywood United Neighborhood Council have direct economic interests in competitors of the Florentine Gardens. These individuals should have recused themselves from the oversight process. In short, the Florentine Gardens has been the victim of unfair competition cloaked in the guise of a fire station selection process. In the next few weeks, you will be considering the certification and approval of a negative declaration. We respectfully submit that that should be rejected. At a minimum, an EIR should be required. However, the entire process has been tainted by the involvement of these individuals with a financial interest in competitors of the Florentine Gardens, and we respectfully submit that the process should begin anew. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Silverstein.
And I will hand the letters.
One of the guards can take that from you. Right over to your left. Thank you. Mary Hernandez, Jiad Mansuri, Dr. Barta Hertz, and Bill Hui will be our next speakers.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning.
I represent the Florentine Gardens. And in a few weeks, it will be coming to your consideration the proposed negative declaration related to the construction of the new Fire Station 82 that includes the demolition of the historical landmark Florentine Gardens. Canfield Real Estate Company letter. Bruce Canfield, owner of a real estate company that has been in Hollywood for 34 years, stated that it is a very bad idea for the city to build a fire training facility on Hollywood Boulevard for two reasons. It is prime real estate, and wrong for the city to spend millions of dollars on such an expensive real estate to build a fire training center. This is a retail area. From an architectural, urban planning point of view, this is the wrong location for a fire training center. Another thing, racial slurs. On September 28th, 2004, two days before the last Oversight Committee meeting, Fran Reckenbach, in one of her emails to her group members, calls the Florentine Gardens "a hip-hop club." This is a racist code language to tell everyone in Beechwood Canyon that it is a minority club. To stay in business, a nightclub must play the music that is currently popular right now. Latin music and hip-hop are very popular. Radio Station Power 106 is number one in the ratings. At the present time, hip-hop is one of their formats. Florentine Gardens is an entertainment center. To stay in business, we must present the style of music that is in with the times, from big band to rock and roll, from new wave to Latin. Over the years, we stayed current with public tastes. Now, the demographics of Los Angeles have changed. We are a diverse community, but there are racist people. We just can't accept that. They won't admit they are racist, but they will call us a hip-hop club. Now, it is up to this committee to send a message that racism is not welcome in LA.
If I could ask you to conclude your comments.
That's it?
Just, why don't you wrap up, a couple more sentences?
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, let's see, all I can say is that this is a landmark, and I hope you take in consideration that. It's for the people of LA and Hollywood.
Great. Thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony today. Jiad Mansuri.
Hi, my name is Jiad Mansuri, and I'm here on behalf of the Florentine Gardens. In a few weeks, it will be coming to your consideration the proposed negative declaration related to the construction of a new Fire Station 82. That includes the demolition of a historical landmark, the Florentine Gardens. My big point is discrimination. There is no Latino sitting in the 16th seat of the Hollywood United Neighborhood Council, yet half of the residents who live in Hollywood are Latinos. Why wasn't there an effort made to inform the Latino community about running for a seat in the neighborhood council? Was there an intentional effort to keep Latinos off the council? Now, the same council is going after the nightclub owned by a Latina owner. It is one of the most popular nightclubs in Hollywood. It serves the city of Hollywood since 1939. It was a nightclub when it opened, and it still is a nightclub today. For all those reasons, I ask all you members, the honorable members of the City Council, to reject the proposed negative declaration, and do not approve the construction of this new Fire Station 82 at the Florentine location. We need a fire department. There are other logistically correct locations centrally located to serve the complete community of Hollywood located. In fact, I think there was another area already that went into escrow that can serve a majority of the vicinities that the fire department needs to be located at. Please take that into consideration.
Thank you, Jiad. Okay. Bill Hui and Barbara Hertz, they're our last two speakers.
Yeah, hi, my name is Bill Hui. I'm the Public Relations spokesperson for the Florentine Gardens. And I'm here to clarify something because this has been a three-year process, and some half-truths have been bantered about. Back in 1950s, when Fire Station 82 was built on Bronson Avenue, the population density of Hollywood was much different than it is today. In the past 50 years, the population of Hollywood has shifted, and we now have a much larger population living east of Western Avenue. This is why the Los Angeles Fire Department originally wanted to replace Fire Station 82 and build the replacement station further east. They wanted to build the new Fire Station in a central location. They chose the corner of Hollywood and Garfield. Instead, because of unethical political pressure, the Los Angeles Fire Department was forced to go further west when they should be going further east. At a previous public hearing this matter, Captain Prince and Chief Bamatri both testified that the new Fire Station should be built in a central location. This is on the public record. Then, on December 1st, 2004, just a couple weeks ago, a Public Works report issued by the city engineer stated that the new Fire Station where the Flo- should not be built where the new- if it were built where the Florentine Gardens is located, it would increase response time by 17 seconds at 30 miles per hour. This was signed by Gary Leemore, city engineer. In a fire or medical emergency, a life can be lost if help is just one second too late. Why is the city going further west when it should be building the new Fire Station further east from its present location? There is no moral answer to this question. The city of Los Angeles is caving into the wrong type of political pressure because building the new Fire Station too far west will cause people on the eastern end of the Hollywood community to die unnecessarily. If the design lifespan of the new Fire Station is 50 years, imagine how many families will be suing the cities over the death of a family member during that time. This is bad planning, and it's going to be very costly in the wrong run. The story about demolishing the Florentine Gardens and building a Fire Station on that site has been reported in the TV and radio news, in the Los Angeles Times, and in several community newspapers. In Los Angeles, where we have more lawyers per square mile than anywhere else in the country, the legal community is very aware, very much aware about what is going on. Build a new Fire Station at the wrong location, and the lawsuits will be filed. They will be coming one after another after another. The right thing needs to be done, and this City Council has the power to do the right thing, which is in the best interest of the people of Los Angeles. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hui. Dr. Barbara Hertz.
Hi, my name is Barbara Coretz. I'm a licensed clini- thank you. Hi, my name's Barbara Coretz. I'm a licensed clinical social worker with close to, hate to admit it, 30 years of experience, much of it working with the geriatric population. Next door to the proposed site for the Fire Station exists a large Salvation Army building. It's a seven-floor facility occupied by elderly people. If the new Fire Station is built next to the building, I would like to address the issue of sirens, barrage of constant noise by the sirens. The National Institute of Occupational Safety and Health says that noise can make us sick. Noises louder than 85 decibels, remember, a typical hairdryer hits 90 decibels, can cause hearing loss, and even softer sounds like a ringing phone can lead to hypertension, stress, and depression. This was recently published in the Time Magazine of November- December 6, 2004. Sirens can also cause sleep deprivation or sleep disruption, which in turn causes various symptomatology, such as tiredness, irritability, inability to tolerate stress, problems with concentration and memory, behavior, learning, or social problems, frequent infections, alterations in appetite, activity intolerance. When I was asked to speak on behalf of the impact of noise, I spoke with a number of senior citizens living in a similar subsidized senior building who told me about their thoughts and feelings upon hearing the frequent sounds of sirens, sirens that visit them regularly just due to living in a senior citizen building.
About 20 seconds left.
Many of them told me they were afraid because next time they were thinking, maybe it will be me or my loved ones. It's well documented the association between psychological stress and increased risk of physical disease. In my professional opinion, it is probable that a negative situation will ensue if the fire department is located next to- Fire Station is located next to the senior building, and will have a negative impact on the mental and physical health of the senior citizens living in the building. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Dr. Coretz. We appreciate your testimony today. That closes our general public comment. And if we can run through the regular scheduled agenda.
Before beginning the regular agenda, Mr. President, there is a request to continue items 19, 20, and 21 by Mr. Parks for 30 days, and the new date would be January 7th.
Okay. If there is no objection to that, then we will continue those items.
On the regular agenda, items noted for public hearing. Item number one is Building and Safety Department has requested that matter be continued to January 5th.
Okay. Is there any objection to continuing item one till January 5th? Seeing none, that will be continued as well.
Item number two is also a public hearing item. It's a hearing and ordinance regarding the Northridge Property and Business Improvement District.
Okay. Item two, we will open and close public comment on that. And do we need a vote on that as well now? Okay, if we can open the roll on that, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
That is approved.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items 3 through 21. Item number three is confirmation of a city official. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, please.
Okay, the next, then the items before council would be 4 through 21.
Okay. 4 through 21 specials, Mr. Reyes.
Yes, next, call item number four special.
Okay.
Mr. President, items 4 through 11, I'll deal with LAX. Let's call them all special.
Okay, we'll call those together. Thank you, Mr. Reyes and Ms. Misakowski. Any other specials, colleagues? If not, let us open the roll on the balance of the items. Oh, excuse me. Which number, Mr. Labange? 18 as well. All right, Mr. Labange would like 18 special. Let's hold that. And on the balance of the items now, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Those items are approved.
Next items before council are 22 through 60, items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. There's no cards on those items, so we'll open and close public comment on those. Any specials, colleagues? Ms. Misakowski?
Mr. President, item 53, I would just like to make a verbal amendment. This is on the construction shortfall funding for the Regional Crime Lab.
Why don't you head to that?
Recommendation number three there says, recommend the CIO allow a wire transfer to the state of California. That should be corrected to say the wire transfer should go to the JPA, so then the dispersal funds from there. So with that amendment, it doesn't need to be called special.
Okay, we'll keep that as amended then. Any other specials, colleagues?
Mr. President, I believe there was a request to hold item number 52 by Mr. Padilla's office.
Okay. Let's hold that on the desk then. And on the balance of the items, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Those items are approved. Okay, let us go back to item three.
And that's a confirmation of Mr. Gary Park to the Board of Information Technology Commissioners. A public hearing has been held in committee, and a committee report is recommending approval.
Okay. Mr. Park, welcome. Good morning. Colleagues, anybody wishing to be heard on this item? You went through committee swimmingly, so if not, we'll open the roll on the item.
Thank you.
Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Congratulations, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Good to have you back as Commissioner.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you. All right. Next item, please.
Mr. President, the airport items are next. Do you wish to take up number 18 first? It was called special by Councilmember Labange.
Mr. Labange, did you want to take that up before the LAX items? It's related to? Okay. No, let's just go in order, let's stay in order then.
Okay, that would be items 4 through 11 are all the LAX items, and I believe council will be voting on them separately, however.
Okay. I think we're going to take public comment together. Mr. Reyes, did you want to say something first? Okay. Why don't we take public comment collectively on those? Ms. Misakowski?
I have no problem. What I was going to suggest is that the city attorney might indicate which each of the items are because we're going to have one collective public hearing. But what the specific items are, some individuals who are speaking may want to speak more specifically to one item or another. But so if I ask the city attorney first to just itemize those issues, then we can begin the public hearing.
Thank you. Why don't we have the city attorney do that? Thank you.
Claudia calling City Attorney's Office. The first, item four is the continued consideration of the Plum Committee Report, Planning and Land Use Management Committee Report. In that committee report, there are a number of sub-items. Item five is the continued consideration of Commerce, Energy, and Natural Resources Committee Report. These have similar items, so I'll go through them together. The first one is before you, and this one requires a public hearing. It's the only one that requires a public hearing, and that is to overrule the LA Airport Land Use Commission determination and adopt findings for that overrule. The second one is to adopt the staff reports from the Planning Department and LAWA. The third one is the environmental findings, including the Environmental Impact Report, the addenda, and all the SEQA findings, and include an instruction that the planning staff file the NOD after the council approves the project. There's also the adoption of the final LAX master plan, conceptual approval of the draft relocation plan, approval of the airport layout plan, adoption of the general land use findings, adoption of the resolution that amends the general plan, including adoption of the LAX plan, and adoption of ordinances, the LAX zone, which is an amendment to the municipal code, zone change ordinance, and the specific plan. In addition, there's the, from Commerce Committee, there's approval of the acquisition of properties. That was a special item. Then the next, item number six on the agenda is both CENR and Plum, and that's deny the appeal of El Segundo on the EIR certification. Items 7, 8, and 9 are appeals from Culver City on three tentative track maps. Item 10 is CENR and Environmental Quality and Waste Management Committee Report. Item 10 is CENR and Environmental Quality and Waste Management Committee Reports on environmental justice mitigation for the city of Inglewood. And then finally, item 11 is the additional addenda that has come to you from Board of Airport Commissioners and Lawa, and there are three of those. That's it. So the only items that require a public hearing is the overrule of ALAC. Everything else, you've already had a public hearing on.
Okay, thank you very much, and we will now turn to public comment for the appropriate items at this time. If I can ask the clerk to maybe put a 20-minute clock up on the board, and let me call forward Mayor Kelly McDowell from the city of El Segundo, to be followed by Mayor Roosevelt Dorn from the city of Inglewood, and they will be followed by Barbara Lichtman, David McCarthy, and Susan Yoon, David Kirsch, Denny Schneider, Mike Stevens, and Cecil Carpio. And if we would all form a line behind the podium, that would expedite our public hearing. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President, honorable council members, good morning and thank you. I'm Kelly McDowell, Mayor of the city of El Segundo. I'm very pleased that in October, the cities of El Segundo and Los Angeles agreed upon a framework and committed ourselves to seek an enforceable agreement that would ensure, among other things, that the capacity of LAX under the master plan does not exceed 78.9 million annual passengers. We remain hopeful that we will be able to resolve our concerns through a negotiated solution that will result in a definitive and legally enforceable final agreement between our two cities. Why is this important? Because the one big key to a truly regional solution to Southern California's aviation needs is constraining LAX to its current capacity of 78 map. Constraint is what will make the region's airports grow. And Lawa is the biggest beneficiary of regional growth because it owns the biggest airports in the region, LAX, Ontario, and someday, Palmdale. But we must effectively constrain LAX to an annual capacity of 78 map, and we can do this in a legally enforceable, long-term agreement between our two cities. During the public planning and review process over the last several years, Los Angeles County, the Southern California Association of Governments, and over 125 other cities and other government agencies have all joined together to push for the implementation of a regional plan. It really is simple, holding LAX to 78.9 map. It gives other airports a fighting chance for the traveler that today views LAX as his only option. Also, from an economic standpoint, multiple airports that have a chance to expand create more construction and permanent jobs in Southern California, as well as bolster local economies throughout the Southland. A regional aviation plan with LAX as the linchpin is truly a win-win. A binding agreement with the city of El Segundo, as the party of interest that has maintained a historic vigilance against the unbridled growth of LAX, will assure that the master plan will truly constrain LAX growth. And while the agreement we've hoped to forge focuses on constraining LAX, we also hope to address other issues, including reviewing ways to make the south runway complex safer without increasing adverse impacts on my city and other airport neighbors, and assuring that Lawa will do everything it can to adequately mitigate the adverse effects of any new changes to the airport and to swiftly compensate its neighbors and make them whole wherever that is appropriate. Meanwhile, El Segundo will continue to safeguard and protect all of our rights. That means our outside legal counsel has submitted technical comments on the final EIR and addendum EIR for the master plan. That means that we continue to oppose the master plan in its present form as it stands today, and it also means that as part of this process, to find a negotiated settlement, we may well have to file legal action to preserve our legal rights. But we hope and will do everything in our power to assure that we can find common ground for a binding agreement. Such an agreement, the first in the history of the airport, would allow a truly regional airport plan to take hold. Opposition to such an agreement hurts not only El Segundo and our neighbors, but also Los Angeles County and Southern California as a whole. We hope that with a legally enforceable agreement in hand, all stakeholders will move forward together to ensure the success of a regional plan. I appreciate Councilwoman Miskowski's and Mayor Hans' leadership on this issue, and I look forward to our continued discussions and seeing these issues resolved before the record of decision is reached by the federal government on the master plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Dorn.
Roosevelt Dorn, Mayor of the city of Inglewood, Council President Padilla, honorable council members. We thank you for giving us an opportunity to address the issues before you. Please understand, the Inglewood City Council opposes any expansion of LA Airport because of its effects, because of the effects it will have on the city of Inglewood. However, the mayor has been given the authority to negotiate an agreement that will sufficiently mitigate the problems that Alternative D will cause for the city of Inglewood. It is important that you realize that only the Inglewood mayor and city council are authorized to represent the city of Inglewood. Neither the LAX Coalition nor any other organization is authorized to represent the Inglewood residents are concerned when they read misleading articles in the news media and hear that the LAX Coalition supports the expansion and is trying to represent the city of Inglewood. The operation of the airport impacts the city of Inglewood greater than any other city. Therefore, we expect our benefits package to be commensurate with the impact the city is experiencing, annual experience in the future. Inglewood's agreement with Lawa must be separate and distinct from any other Lawa agreements. Inglewood's resident, residential insulation program must take priority over all other benefits. Our residents are the most impacted and have been waiting for relief for 20 years since the 1984 expansion. This fact alone justifies our residents receiving immediate relief. We simply can no longer afford to wait for years to mitigate these noise and pollution problems. The city of Inglewood must have the jobs and job training programs administered by the city of Inglewood through our one-stop program. We support the unions. As a matter of fact, I'm a union member. Since we are the most impacted, we should receive a commensurate number of jobs and job training programs. We would love to see a number of Inglewood residents wearing the orange jerseys that you see here this evening. We are attempting to reach an agreement with Lawa that will be sanctioned by the FAA within the next 30 days. However, if this cannot be accomplished, we ask that the statute be told so that the city will not lose any of its rights. We look forward to meeting with Lawa and FAA so that we may consummate an agreement that will mitigate any and all problems caused by Alternative D. Inglewood's attorney, Barbara Lichtman, will work with Lawa's attorney to develop the final agreement. Understand this, no matter what agreement you reach with any other organization, at the end of the day, the mayor and council is going to be held responsible by the residents of Inglewood to see that the mitigation issues are carried out. There is no other organization that is in a position to do that. Any organization that you may enter into an agreement can ride off into the sunset. But the fact is, the mayor and city council is still going to be held responsible for seeing that the damage caused by Alternative D is mitigated.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Barbara Lichtman.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Barbara Lichtman of the firm of Chevalier Allen &amp; Lichtman, counsel to the city of Inglewood. I would just like to spend a moment putting in context the mayor's comments. I'm sure you're all well aware that the most severely impacted community is the city of Inglewood by this expansion. For instance, of all the residents newly exposed to the 65 CNEL contour, which is considered the most significant contour, LA City has 180, LA County has 190, and Inglewood has 4,190. Similarly, of the residents who will feel an increase of 1.5 decibels within the 65, considered a significant increase by the FAA, 4,800 will be in Inglewood, as opposed to 210 in the city of LA. And finally, of those who will be newly awakened by the noise that will result from this airport expansion, LA City will experience, residents will experience 800, 220 residents in the county, and 17,000 in the city of Inglewood. Now, we are a little bit surprised that in the months you've been negotiating with the quote "coalition" close quote, you never approached the city of Inglewood to discuss the settlement, which is now, thankfully, in the works between the parties. We are deeply concerned, however, that LAX will be squandering its resources by dealing with a commission, a coalition that really has no official sanction. What we want to know is where does Inglewood fit into this complex? We expect to negotiate a separate and distinct agreement with the city of Los Angeles and the airport with regard to the mitigation measures which are critical to the welfare of Inglewood residents, and we hope we can do it within the next 30 days, although your agenda item seems to give it an unlimited amount of time. We don't have that amount of time. So we will ask the council to instruct the city attorney to grant us a tolling agreement of the statute of limitations under SEQA so that we can complete a reasonable, a reasonable agreement that will benefit both the city of Los Angeles and the residents of Inglewood. And we thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Mr. McCarthy.
Thank you, honorable council members. I'll keep my comments brief, as I've previously addressed the council, and the city of Culver City has submitted various letters and memoranda. Basically, I'm just going to reiterate that the LA staff report has argued that the city of Culver City is not within the airport environs and therefore not subject to environmental analysis, and that's simply absurd. Until a complete understanding of likely impacts resulting from the LAX project is provided, an effective mitigation program cannot, cannot be developed and reviewed. Again, the city of Culver City expects that the request and entitlements, actions, and approvals be postponed until such time as Lawa and the FAA have prepared a complete and adequate environmental analysis addressing the concerns we have stated. Thank you very much.
Honorable city council members, my name is Susan Yoon, and I'm here representing the city of Culver City. Culver City respectfully requests the Los Angeles City Council not to take any action today on the LAX master plan program because SEQA is not adequately conducted. Culver City is a small city. We're approximately five square miles in area. We're located on the west side of Los Angeles. The city of Los Angeles is our neighbor and geographically surrounds Culver City in almost every direction. Many motorists drive through Culver City to reach many of Los Angeles's activity centers, such as Playa Vista, Marina Del Rey area, and LAX. As you are aware, the traffic on the west side is severely congested, in particular along the north and south transportation corridors, such as I-405, Sepulveda Boulevard, Overland Avenue, Centinela Boulevard, and Jefferson Boulevard. Despite this reality, the EIR fails to analyze significant impacts that occur, that could occur in Culver City from the expansion plan. We are virtually ignored in the study. The traffic study that was prepared for the LAX master plan indicated significant impacts along Venice Boulevard from I-405 to Overland Avenue, which is along the northern boundaries of Culver City. Additional impacts were found on South Tel Boulevard, Sepulveda Boulevard, and Overland Avenue, south of Venice Boulevard, near the heart of Culver City. This is a clear indication that there are likely impacts to be at critical Culver City intersections in those areas. To assume that there are no impacts in Culver City is a grave error. Culver City hopes that the city council implement our request to propose, postpone the approval of the LAX master plan until adequate SEQA analysis is prepared. Thank you.
David Kirsch is our next speaker, followed by Denny Schneider. Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is David Kirsch, and I am here on behalf of the Carpenter's Contractors Cooperation Committee to once again show our strong support for the LAX master plan. Lawa has spent over 10 years planning, and it has invested millions of dollars to come up with a plan that best works for our region. Alternatives have been developed, and the public has had ample opportunities to provide input. The time has come to take action. Our organization believes the plan before you adequately addresses the need to make the airport a more efficient and secure facility. Though just as important as making it possible to have a more efficient facility and improving security for travelers is providing job security for the men and women of our region. Through the tens of thousands of good-paying construction jobs with healthcare and pension benefits, as well as the excellent training opportunities that will be created, this plan will go a long way to improve the overall well-being of all of our communities around the airport. This process will be felt deep down in the lives of men and women next door or across town who will be able to go to a job where they are treated with respect and dignity for their hard work, building the infrastructure needed for a region to flourish. This is an investment in the future of our city, and the apprentices back here are the face of the future of this city. Once again, we urge you to vote in favor of this plan. Thank you.
Now, let me, before hearing from the next speaker, let me also announce that additional cards have been submitted, and we're down to seven and a half minutes on this time clock here. Denny Schneider will be followed by Mike Stevens, Cecil Carpio, Adrian Congar, Bruce McDaniel, Geraldine Mendoza, and Richard Slosson. Go ahead.
Council members, Denny Schneider, ARSAQ, I've given you lots of comments. I'm going to summarize. You have them all in writing anyway, but basically, let's cut to the chase. You're trying to approve all of Alternative D right now, and that is what you're going to do. You have some new processes that you've set up in the, in the LAX specific plan. Use them instead of just giving us lip service. That's the holy issue. And yes, we do need construction jobs, and this whole area is underbuilt in terms of infrastructure. We are overtaxing the infrastructure. Put them to work, and put them to work on jobs that need to be done. The RAN study gave you all kinds of suggestions to improve present. Do it now. And I, I'm just going to just conclude with, we need a truly regional solution. We cannot control the, the infrastructure at this point, and we are overtaxed. Stop expanding at LAX now. It's still a sizable increase at 78 million. And show us any document that can hold it to that, because you know darn well that it won't be. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name, my name is Mike Stevens. I'm a resident of Inglewood. I'm president of an organization called LAX Expansion No. 1998, 99, 2000, 2001, 2002, you saw those yard signs on all those homes. I want to say something. You, city council, could direct the Los Angeles World Airport to, in fact, participate in the purchase of the land in Orange County known as El Toro Air Station. All my fellow union brothers here could have jobs there, wear their orange vests in Orange County. You have to understand, what's happening here is that we have to mitigate. Mitigate means what? Placing people in a bunker? When you place someone in a bunker, the air supply comes to an air conditioner, air is dry. No air filter, if you're not a hemp of filter. But the point is, is this, is that let's propose that I cut your hands off. I just come up there with an axe, I chop your hands off. I give you pretty gloves to wear. When I give you these gloves to wear, I say to you, I say, isn't that nice? Have I, have I affected you? Of course I have. Let's take it one step further. Let's say I rob you, take your money, and then come back to you and say, here, I'll give you a loan. And when I give you that loan, I'm giving you a loan with your own money. That's what you're doing with mitigation, because the state mandated that you sound that they make the surrounding community compatible with the airport, whereas at El Toro, the land is already compatible. How would you pay for it? The same way you're paying for LAX, and it would only cost 20 cents on a dollar. So it would cost less because 20% of it would be paid for by the airport. I'm going to wrap up with this. When it comes to representing the community, we have one city council, one school district. These These coalitions that you've marched up here over the past two weeks, three weeks, and I've been sitting here watching them, they don't represent the community, yet LAX Expansion No was never invited to participate in this so-called coalition. What you've got are individuals propped up to be community representatives, and in the end result is, you put them on the front pages of newspaper on the news media and proclaim that they're representing the community in order to push forward Alternative D, pushed forward by Ms. Misinkowski, who was not elected by the residents of Westchester. Bottom line is that we need to have some sort of input. You want to sound insulate? Fine. You want to mitigate? Give us all a million dollars for our homes. We'll let you have it, homes. Do that. Give us a million dollars. But you must not disrespect the people. We support the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Cecil Carpio. I live in the city of Inglewood. Not only am I concerned with the expansion of the airport, I oppose that, but the process also concerns me. Councilmember Misinkowski championed the community's right to a one-hundred-and-eighty-day environmental document review process, but then she slid in an eleventh-hour consensus plan on the BoAC Planning Commission and Advisory Agency table during public hearings. So for her, on one hand, it's good for public review, but on the other hand, it's not. Come on, woman, give me a break. Now, the planning documents for LAX expansion sit before you for consideration and approval, but when will the community benefits agreement be considered? Next week. And when will it be approved by the FAA? Who knows? So my suspicions are raised, the timing of community versus what LAWA wants, just is the same old thing, and broken promises. Look me in the face again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Adrienne. Order, please. Next speaker is Adrienne Conegar, followed by Bruce McDaniel and Geraldine Mendoza.
My name is Adrienne Conegar, and I'm general counsel and representative for Inglewood Unified School District. I also served as chief negotiator during the negotiations process with LAWA concerning LAX and the school's benefit agreement. Inglewood Unified School District is a separate and distinct public entity from the city or the county. We have worked tenuously over the last nine or ten months, consistently over the last nine or ten months, to reach agreement with LAWA that would benefit the students who attend our district. Every day, the students of Inglewood Unified District are impacted by the Los Angeles Airport. Studies have shown that the ability of students to learn is severely hampered by noise and other environmental factors. In particular, at one of our schools, instruction literally stops every ninety seconds while a plane passes over. While our students have and will continue to be impacted, we have joined with LAWA to reach an agreement that would mitigate some of the harms and provide such things as noise mitigation, soundproofing of windows, HVAC system improvement, and other measures which would allow students to learn in an environment that is more consistent with today's standards. We urge you to vote to override the Airport Land Use Committee's determination and to ultimately approve the LAX master plan and school's benefit agreement so that our students will be provided with the relief they need. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Bruce McDaniel, the superintendent with the Lenox School District, and I'd like to indicate, contrary to previous speakers' comments, I do represent the Lenox School District. A year ago, our school board, on a unanimous vote, appointed me to sit in the negotiations with LAWA and come to a reasonable settlement. And just last week, at a special board meeting, they approved that settlement agreement, that I'm pleased to say that we worked very hard with the LAWA representatives to come up with an arrangement that will provide desperately needed mitigation to improve the instructional program for our students. Like the speaker from Inglewood, we're urging you to override the Airport Land Use Committee's determination so that this mitigation can move forward. Every day that we delay the implementation of this plan is another day that students are negatively affected by noise. So we urge you to act quickly, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Geraldine Mendoza, and she'll be followed by Richard Slosson, Sandra Lloyd Jones, Diane Sombrano, and Lawrence Teeter, as time allows.
Good morning. My name is Geraldine Lopez Mendoza. I'm an attorney and policy director at Environmental Defense. I'm also the chair of the steering committee for the LAX Coalition that's been mentioned several times this morning. Wanted to clarify a couple of things with regard to the coalition. We do not, and have never, never represented to anyone that we represent anyone other than the twenty-two organizations and the two school districts that are part of our coalition. Our coalition has been meeting together for over a year. We have a lot of relationships that we've built up over that time between environmental groups and unions and other groups and organizations that are based in Inglewood and Lenox and South LA, but never once have we said we represent anyone other than our organizations. I also want to be very clear, none of us, and I've said this before in this venue, none of us are receiving any financial gain from this agreement. All of the money that was referenced in the media reports, all of the money we've talked about in terms of the mitigation measures, goes directly to those mitigation measures. They go to noise mitigation measures and reductions of air pollution, and for job training, that's what the money goes to. We don't get anything. So to the extent that we're called sellouts, to the extent that people accuse us of benefiting somehow, believe me, if I was going to sell out, it would be a heck of a lot easier than sitting at the table across from the LAWA folks for the past ten months and hammering out this agreement. A couple of other quick points. Everything is in the agreement we had in our draft EIR comments that we submitted as a coalition last year on November sixth. A couple of the things that we've been able to negotiate are some very serious, reasonable, and practical diesel emission reductions, specifically relating to ground service equipment and construction equipment. Diesel emissions are carcinogenic, so to the extent we can reduce those reductions, and we will through this agreement, we're very excited about that progress. There will also be several studies conducted with respect to air emissions and health studies, all of which will be made public through our CBA process. So I just wanted to clarify a couple of things that were said. We're very excited about the CBA. We look forward to answering any questions you might have next week when it's before you, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Members of the council, the twenty-minute public comment period clock has run out. Is there any objection to extending this to hear from only those members of the public who have already submitted speaker cards? Saying none, then we'll extend it, but everybody in chambers, no, once we're done with the cards in my hand, that's going to be it. Richard Slosson, followed by Sandra Lloyd Jones, Diane Sombrano, and Lawrence Teeter. Go ahead.
Thank you, council president, council members. I'm Richard Slosson, the executive secretary of the Los Angeles and Orange County Building and Construction Trades Council, and I, first of all, want to say congratulations for getting this project after over a decade to this historic moment today. This is a wonderful process, and I commend the city council, the staff, the mayor's office for putting an effort together to finally get a modern, safe, and secure airport on the agenda and a final vote, hopefully, today. In discussing the override, first of all, which is the public comment that we're supposed to be talking on today, the building trades representatives had also attended the county meetings where the override or the land use plan was discussed, and comparing it to the proposal for the modernization of LAX. It was disappointing to see that the county airport land use commission went ahead and voted even though they knew that their plan was so outdated, it was incompatible with any plan for modernization of LAX. And that's what we're discussing today, and hopefully, the council will vote to override and move this project forward. On behalf of all the trades that have been through, like, six years of hearings, city council meetings, and the other cities surrounding the airport, I'd like to mention everybody that has participated in making presentations and studying the environmental impact reports so that we could move this project forward and create a modern, safe, and economic airport. The asbestos workers, the bricklayers, the boilermakers, the electricians, the elevator constructors, the operating engineers, the ironworkers, the laborers, the painters, plasters and cement masons, plumbers and pipe fitters, roofers, sheet metal workers, teamsters, and carpenters are all a part of an agreement, and I'd like to ask them just to stand up for a minute and get the recognition of the time and energy that they put into this process. If you could all just stand up for one moment. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, please. Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Sandra Lloyd Jones, and I am the district director for newly-elected Assemblyman Mike Gordon, who was just sworn into office yesterday and who represents the fifty-third Assembly District, which includes Los Angeles International Airport. The assemblyman would like to extend his apologies for not being here today. As a new assemblyman, he is in Sacramento, attending new member training. As many of you are aware, Assemblyman Gordon is the former mayor of El Segundo and the leader of a coalition of one-hundred-and-twenty-five cities and government agencies that favor a regional aviation solution, has actively opposed the expansion of Los Angeles International Airport for over eight years. He asked me to testify today to urge you to oppose the final approval of the EIR master plan. This plan, now known as a consensus plan, does not enjoy consensus in the community surrounding this airport that the assemblyman represents. On May eighth of this year, Assemblyman Gordon launched a petition drive to stop the expansion of LAX and to demonstrate to the city of Los Angeles that the people who live and work around this airport do not want expansion and do not support this plan. To date, we have collected over eighteen thousand signatures from residents of the city of Los Angeles. Make no mistake, this is a large contingency of this city that opposes the plan that you are voting on today. Assemblyman Gordon is opposed to the final EIR master plan or consensus plan for the following reasons. First of all, it allows for the expansion of the airport to what is approximately agreed upon to a ninety-two million annual passengers. Two, it calls for the southern runway to be moved fifty feet closer to El Segundo. Three, it does not call for the city of Los Angeles to play a leading role in the development of a regional aviation system. Four, it calls for the Ground Transportation Center, a yellow-lighted project under this plan that is the sole remedy for all traffic mitigation and safety and security concerns of the airport. Yellow-lighted projects come with the reassurance that they will not be pursued until further analysis can be completed. Yet the Ground Transportation Center is the cornerstone of this plan, and its construction accounts for the majority of the estimated nine billion dollars that the plan will cost. Why not conduct the analysis now to make this a true consensus plan before rushing it through without public support? With this opposition in mind, Assemblyman Gordon would like to make the following recommendations for how the EIR master plan could be amended. First, physically constrain the growth of the airport by restricting the number of gates to a level that will limit passenger utilization to the agreed-upon cap of seventy-eight-point-nine million annual passengers. Two, study other alternatives to moving the southern runway fifty feet closer to El Segundo, including the end-around taxiway. Three, study other alternatives to the Ground Transportation Center that will address safety and security concerns as well as mitigating traffic at less cost, inconvenience, and hardship to the neighboring communities. And lastly, the city of Los Angeles should become a leader in the development of other airports throughout Southern California to create a true regional aviation system. In his newly-elected capacity, Assemblyman Gordon looks forward to working on this issue at the state level and to researching the capability of implementing a regional airport system that will coordinate the efforts of twelve airports in this region to address the larger question of handling aviation demands in Southern California. In closing, Assemblyman Gordon is calling upon you today to consider carefully what voting to certify the final EIR master plan means. First, it means reneging on a pledge that Mayor Hahn made three years ago to limit the expansion of LAX. Second, it ignores eighteen thousand Los Angeles residents who have signed a petition opposing this plan. Third, it is a rush to approve a consensus plan in name only without conducting the necessary analysis to get it right, thereby making the city of Los Angeles vulnerable to numerous lawsuits. Assemblyman Gordon hopes that you will consider his recommendations and comments when voting today. He also looks forward to partnering with the city of Los Angeles and all of Southern California to find a viable alternative that meets the needs of Southern California without placing the burden at the doorstep of those who live and work around this airport. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Sombrano.
Good afternoon. How nice it would be if I noticed some of you paying attention to the speakers at this podium. Unfortunately, I've been here often enough to know that that doesn't occur too often. So maybe if I wave something in the air, you'll get it.
Ma'am, we're listening. Go ahead with your comments, please, and items before us. If not, we'll go to the next speaker.
I will, and that is what I'm speaking on. Last meeting, someone brought up the audiovisual that perhaps this was about fifty feet, and that's all this was. I would submit it's more about carcinogens. Now, you've gone out of your way to limit carcinogens in areas where the public meets, some places even on beaches, and yet you sit here today suggesting that it is quite all right and absolutely acceptable to drop significantly more carcinogens on my community than this carton of cigarettes. If you bothered to read that EIR that we all claim you all did, you would notice that the air pollution studies are not anywhere close to my neighborhood, that which is impacted. And yet you plan on going forward. You sit here and proclaim that you represent all those people with jobs, yet my neighbors have to be at their jobs today. I would suggest that those who say you have to go on because you've been studying and you've been planning, consider if you planned a wedding for your daughter, and two days before, that anticipated groom beat her up, you might suggest it would be wise to cancel that wedding. This is not a consensus plan. You heard before that all the cities surrounded the affected airport area are not in agreement. Only very few are. Consensus is not an appropriate word. And yet I fully expect you to all go forward, with the exception of very few, and engage your city in significant litigation. Is that a good representation of your dollars? I don't think so.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm Lawrence Teeter, and I represent the Federation of Hillside and Canyon Associations, Coalition Against the Pipe Line, the Alliance for Regional Solution to Airport Congestion, and Michelle Gremay in opposition to this project. There are a number of problems with your EIR. First of all, it violates the rule against project segmentation provided by state and federal law. You've chosen to chop the project analysis into two pieces, dealing with the second part, which is the more difficult part later on, after the approval of the second part is already foreordained by the first part. That's illegal. And I'm talking, when I say the second part, which is more difficult, the Manchester Square, which requires the demolition of large numbers of housing units. The second problem is you fail to consider the impact of your prior concession in August of two thousand and one, that you lack guaranteed funding for the Transportation Improvement Mitigation Program, which was part of the general plan framework, which was amended in response to a successful lawsuit on order of the Court of Appeal brought by the Hillside Federation. You failed to consider the lack of secure funding for that program, and yet are rushing ahead with a project approval without considering the cumulative impacts that will be generated by this project. This project is going to have huge traffic impacts. How can you go ahead with approval without acknowledging and considering the possibility that the federal government, which is in a deficit, and the state government, which is in a deficit, will not have enough money to pay their fair share of the temp? And you know about this problem. We took you to court, we won. I guess we'll have to take you to court again. Please don't make us do that. Vote no on this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comments on items four through eleven for today's meeting. We now return to council discussion and deliberation. I'd like to begin by recognizing the chair of the planning committee, Mr. Ed Reyes. He'll be followed by Councilmember Misinkowski, and then by Councilmember Cardenas, chairman of the Commerce Committee.
Thank you, council president. First, I want to congratulate everyone for that stick-to-it-iveness and making sure we're at this phase and we're finally going to tie that big bow around this final package, so I want to compliment them for that great work. What I'd like to do is, if I could ask Councilmember Misinkowski to go through the first eleven items regarding the report that came from Plum, and I'd like to address, upon the conclusion of her presentation, address the final EIR addenda. addenda.
Councilmember Misakowski?
Thanks. I think we should probably have the City Attorney and the LAWA staff run through those technical issues and then I will make some comments in general. But, members, we last looked at this as a council only on October 19th. And at that time, we had the first presentation and we still had a lot of work to do after that initial presentation. And I can assure you, probably from what you've heard today in the testimony, that there has been a lot of work that has been ongoing and almost continuous. Since October 19th, this plan has been submitted to the California State Coastal Commission and been approved. Since October 19th, we had a joint statement issued by the City of Los Angeles and the City of El Segundo, signed by the mayors, authorized by the Board of Airport Commission, indicating that there was a framework to go forward to address the issues that had been of concern to El Segundo with the intent to reach a memorandum of understanding and an agreement that will be formalized and that we are still working towards. But we had the commitment from both cities that we had generally the understanding of how we could go forward. We had, interestingly, although the Los Angeles County has indicated that they were going to potentially pursue a lawsuit, we have had meetings with LA County. And in fact, what you have before you today, our findings changed in this plan as a consequence of the LA County's request from their consultants and from the many meetings we had. So on the one hand, you sometimes read reports saying we haven't talked, but we've talked and exchanged emails as recently as yesterday and this morning with LA County representatives saying, please change the plan to put these things in the finding statement. And what that does is reinforce and reiterate that the process is going to be ongoing, the process is one of further environmental study on a project basis. Mr. Teeter said we're project segmenting. We aren't project segmenting. We have a master plan and a framework master plan EIR. But we know for each individual project, whether green-lighted or yellow-lighted, we need specific project environmental review. We need specific project environmental input from community, from the other cities around, and from those who have those concerns. That is what is set forward. We have, most phenomenally, the Community Benefits Agreement. And although it's not formally before us because that document is now out looking at and four signatures from the Inglewood School District, the Lenox School District, the Environmental Defense Group, and others, there will be multiple signatures on that presented and brought back to us, both by committee next week and then to council on our final vote next week on the specific plan. But, members, the Community Benefit Agreement is a half a billion dollars of mitigation, environmental justice issues, job training issues, and real focus on the communities that are in real need. Mayor Roosevelt Dorn, who is here today, is right. The City of Inglewood is not and was not a participant as a city in that agreement. But in the meantime, the City of Inglewood has been part of discussions for its own separate agreement. And those meetings and discussions and framework of those issues has been discussed and in general agreed on by LAWA. And those meetings continue up until Friday of last week and will continue. The Commerce, Energy, and National Resources Committee, hard-driven by our Chair, Mr. Cardenas, has had a meeting every week since October 19th on LAX. We've discussed the issues that were brought up at the last time, not only on the community benefit side, but specifically on the security side. The issues of what is the short-term answer for securities? What are the longer-term answers? What are we doing both outside the plan and within the plan to move those forward? Those reports have been submitted and are on your desk today. Members, I think, as we said, this was not just to do it and come back and do it again. This was work at it, continue to work at it. And, members, that's the course that this plan sets. It is not a do this and then go away. It's do it, come back, work with the stakeholder liaison group, set this process in motion so that we don't continually just go around and around and talking about something, but we have people and partnerships and commitment to move forward for what we need to do in this city, and that is to modernize and improve LAX within a framework, within a standard, within controls, but consistent with the commitments we are making to the community and all of its participants. I would like the LAX staff and the City Attorney to talk about the specifics and some of the additional things that are on our agenda today in more detail about what we are doing today from what we had done on October 19th and how we have brought forward the additional documentation to set that framework for our vote today.
Claudia Cullen, City Attorney's Office. One of the things that you're doing today that's different than you did on October 20th is on October 20th, you had before you actions that you were going to propose to take and you sent those proposed actions to the California Department of Transportation, Aeronautics Division, and also to the County's Airport Land Use Commission. Those agencies have sent responses to our comments or to your proposed findings, and those are on the file now. And we have presented you today with findings you may adopt in response to those. Today, you will have the opportunity to actually vote on the entire package of approvals that are before you. You have the three track map appeals, you have the El Segundo appeal, and you have all of the master plan actions before you.
Back to Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. The action we're also taking today is we want to adopt the December 7th staff report, which will essentially instruct the planning department to change the maps, to reflect all the current changes for consistency's sake. What we're also doing is we're moving on the FEIR addenda. We have several addends that we'll be covering. The second addenda is addressing the issues raised by the Coastal Commission, US Fish and Wildlife Service, and the Federal Aviation Administration. Our third addenda addresses the issues related to traffic circulation resulting from the analysis made, the reduction of the second phase of the private development. And the fourth addenda is addressing an issue related to the Community Benefits Agreement. But just in closing, just briefly, can we, the folks here at the table, can you just give us a brief highlight of the Community Benefits Package, just for the record?
We'd be happy to. And in fact, I would like if Reverend Smart would join us, who represented the coalition, perhaps he can contribute as well. Talking about the highlights of the Community Benefits Agreement.
To the honorable council members, this is indeed a very exciting day for us. Can you imagine that we have spent the last 10 months sitting down with the Los Angeles World Airport's Mr. Jim Ritchie and the 22 coalition members negotiating a Community Benefits Agreement that affects everybody, that affects individuals and groups that were not at the table, but they will benefit? We didn't represent any governmental body, but this was truly an opportunity where, when we sat down and as we went through this process, I was reminded of the Constitution of the United States that said, "We the people." And this truly was a process when it was "we the people." Part of the Community Benefits Agreement focuses on jobs, job training, ensuring that residents of the impacted area would be involved in getting jobs and getting the job training of the modernization plan. Another part of the Community Benefits Agreement deals with mitigations, it deals with environmental enhancements, electrification of gates so that the air quality around the airport, not just those communities east of the airport, but El Segundo and Westchester, all of those areas would be impacted and that our children would be able to, and I say "our children" because I'm a resident of Westchester Ladera, our children would be able to breathe better. Part of the benefits deals with the health study, mobile health research labs, environmental justice, community-based research studies, community preparedness for airport-related emergencies. We're excited about the air quality emissions reduction and control, something LAWA has agreed to bring before the FAA, some landmark things that no other airport in the world has done. I think this is something that we're proud of. And so, if you have any questions of me or someone else, we have one of our researchers here that can answer any question you may have.
Yes, what I'd like to address is as this organization begins to grow and mature, I want to make sure that the council, my council colleagues are in a position to also participate. When we're referring nonprofits, groups that are engaged in job training, looking at how we can extend that umbilical cord, if you will, from the resources evolving from this economic engine into and throughout the city, will we have that potential and how do we move forward in that regard?
Yes, the coalition, like I said, will be involved on an ongoing basis with LAWA. At that time, when LAWA is ready, say, to open up, to start the job training process, there will be a process where the council will be notified and community groups will be notified so that all those community groups that want to participate will be able to participate.
Has there been discussion, when we look at the Community Development Department, we look at previous models that we've been able to assemble. When we did the Staples Center, we had a network of nonprofits working there. Just for the record, I want to make sure if we're building up from that.
Yes, we are. That's the same model.
So again, just in closing, I wanted to thank you all for your hard work. It's been a long time coming.
Thank you.
And again, the future is brighter and we can see how we can develop these options, look at the infrastructure, and deal in a very real way the problems that have been plaguing the city and looking at this as a vast opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much for bringing that up, Councilman Reyes. When it comes to the Community Benefits Agreement, we've heard it this morning in the Commerce Committee, as we've heard it in every Commerce Committee, every week that we've scheduled it for the last two months. And we're going to hear it again next Tuesday in the Commerce Committee, and then we'll have an opportunity to put it on the floor of the council next Tuesday, should it pass out of committee. I just wanted to thank the coalition and also LAWA for working together in a spirit of cooperation, so much so that it's my understanding that the FAA complimented both of your organizations when you went to Washington just a week ago, or earlier, it was a week ago, correct. So I just wanted to say that I reserve my comments on that issue for next week. But for now, I'd like to ask the department, if you could please clarify for us, are you privy to the J.D. Powers study that was just announced recently?
Yes, we are aware of it.
And can you point out a couple of things that unfortunately were some disappointing issues that they pointed out about LAX?
Well, I think it's not just this year. Repeatedly, over the last few years, we have been rated very low on the J.D. Powers study. The lines that are formed in front of the security screening is certainly one of the elements there, but I think it's really the overall passenger experience. And one of the reasons that we want to do this modernization plan is so that we can improve the airport's experience. And hopefully, this master plan will allow us to rise dramatically in future J.D. Power surveys.
It's my understanding that according to this chart, it's pretty clear that we're down at the bottom. It looks like we're 19th out of 22 in overall satisfaction by our customers, by people who come to Los Angeles. Is it in fact the case that Los Angeles, LAX, is one of the busiest international airports in the country? And if it is, what kind of impression are visitors to Los Angeles and the region getting when they come to LAX and that's the first thing they see?
Well, it's certainly not what they deserve to experience here. The fact that we have not done any major capital improvements since 1984 shows in the dilapidation of some of our facilities. I think if you look at the J.D. Powers list, you'll see that those in the top group are all ones that have had recent physical, major capital projects to improve their physical configuration.
We're looking at the top of the list. On this list and another one I'm going to show you is Hong Kong, Orlando, and Denver are the top three. And they've all been renovated and gone through major.
In fact, they are new airports, truly. They've been rebuilt from the bottom up. Hong Kong is on a new island. Denver, as you know, was built, a brand-new Greenfield Airport away from downtown Denver, and Orlando is a very new facility.
Now, when it comes to security check satisfaction, it looks like we're almost at the bottom of the list. We're second to the bottom. And these aren't just airports here in the United States, these are international airports around the world. So we're certainly, we cannot say that we're a world-class airport to the customers that come to LAX.
Absolutely not.
The reason why I ask you these questions, because I'd like you to point out to us, what's the relevance, what's the relevance to those facts? And I would consider a J.D. Powers report to be an unadulterated factual report. What's the relevance of those facts to LAX and to the people of Los Angeles and to the community at large?
It's basically that we just have a facility that was not built for the traffic that we get today. It was not built for the aircraft that we get in there today. It certainly was not built for a post-9/11 security system. And so, we need this approval to go ahead and make the improvements to LAX to get it up in those ratings.
Unfortunately, and I'm speaking to the community of Los Angeles, unfortunately, we have a convention center that is in fact built to world-class. But unfortunately, many of the conventions don't happen here in Los Angeles, and we're competing with much smaller convention centers that, in my opinion, we shouldn't be competing with. But one of the components of that is people just don't like to come through LAX to come to Los Angeles. They don't want their 2,000 members to meet in Los Angeles because they're going to be forced to come through LAX, and it's just something that people just don't enjoy. The reason why I mention that is because there are tens of thousands of jobs that depend on the continuous operation of LAX. But I want to say to the people who are here in the crowd, who are part of the labor groups that would be building and modernizing this airport, I think that it's only appropriate that we recognize that this is an endeavor and a process that is imperfect so far, but I think that when it comes down to the construction of this facility, we have the professionals ready, willing, and able to work on this airport and to get the job done. And I think it's incumbent upon us to continue this process. It's incumbent upon us to continue this process and to do the right thing. It's about public safety. It truly is about public perception, and that public perception is hindering the community at large of Los Angeles and beyond in a way that we would be irresponsible if we didn't move forward. And I want to thank LAWA for doing the job that they've been doing and for keeping up with their commitment of stepping up the ability for public scrutiny to continue and your willingness to continue to have these discussions in full view of the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman.
Ms. Misakowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we've discussed a lot of the details here, and what I had specifically wanted to do was deal with the issues since we had it last before us. But again, when it was last before us, what is important about this process is that it is a general plan, action, a master plan, and a framework for that with that EIR, but more specifically, a brand-new and very, very different process for the City of LA and for LA World Airports. That process involves the City Council, that process will involve the community, that process is setting forth a new partnership. The Community Benefits people who are sitting here are part of that partnership. The Los Angeles World Airport has announced today that they have created a new position, a deputy director position, which is going to be specifically for the quality control, the managing, and the assurance that all of the mitigation measure and the monitoring of those mitigation measures that are part of the EIR process, that those elements that are part of the Community Benefits Agreement are really going to be overseen and monitored in terms of quality control by a new deputy director. It's important for the City Council now and in the future to have an annual report on the Los Angeles World Airport, not only on the quality control or the cost control of what we're doing and how the projects are going, but those real quality controls, those promises. We don't want a City Council, five years, 10 years in the future, to hear people say a litany of failed promises, agreements that were made that weren't followed. We have a deputy director, and that deputy director should be coming forward every year to the City Council and say, are we on the mark? Are we following the commitment? Is there understanding? And hopefully, we will have the same people who are here on that Community Benefits participation and others in the community who can look at the litany, who can look at the checklist and say, here's where we are, here's where we're going, and we've kept those promises. And if not, to be telling LAWA and the City Council about that. Members, this vote today is a vote for our labor community, for good jobs, high-paying jobs, for training of people who are going to be impacted. It's a vote to really move forward. It's a vote for environmental justice. We have seen, time and again, the environmental justice issues. We have seen, time and again, the environmental justice issues put on the side, not addressed, not fully focused on. Today, we've got half a billion dollars' worth of environmental justice programs, policy, and participation that is a part of this plan. We have heard from the FAA that they were impressed that the Community Benefits people came to Washington with LAWA. LAWA didn't go first and have a side deal. LAWA said, here's what we're talking about, here's our partner. The FAA was blown away by that, said normally we're here meeting with people who are fighting or marginalizing or in conflict. You can be a model for the country in how we move forward and how we do this. Members, we have spent a long, long time in this city. I was reminded, and I mentioned yesterday, to someone, this is sort of like a feeling of Groundhog Day. We go around and we study, and a new plan and we study, and then we have election and we study again, and then a new election. And we are hearing some people say, study some more, do it again. It is time for this city council to act. This framework is the right way in which to act because it basically says, partnership, incrementally, move forward together, review everything together, and at a certain point, study it all over again and make sure we're on the mark. And if we're not, veer off the mark, change the mark because of what the environmental analysis will be at that point. But we know we need to get this done. J.D. Powers, and you know, although it's just sort of essentially a popularity contrast about how good it is, it is telling. It is telling, and anybody, all of us having gone through LAX, have felt the same frustration as every other person who travels through that institution. So this is the way to go, it's the place to go. It's not signing away anything, it's just signing a commitment to become a partner with our airlines, with our community, with our neighboring communities who are impacted, to say, let's go through this together and get it done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. The newspaper, today's headline clearly reflects what many of us feel every time we go to LAX, longer waits. Fifty-six million last year, 61 million passengers this year. I don't know how we tell people not to fly. I don't know how we tell people, don't visit your family on the East Coast during the holidays. I don't know how we tell business members not to come to the city of Los Angeles. What I found, and I was at National League of Cities last week with some of my colleagues, and I traveled there Tuesday night at 11:30, and there was a traffic jam at the airport. I returned Saturday night at about 10 o'clock, and there was another traffic jam. It doesn't matter what time you're flying out of LAX, it's always going to be a traffic jam. I know that the freeways are past capacity, the 405, the 105, the 101. There's not a lot we're going to do about that, and we should do something about it, but where do we find the dollars to improve the freeway system? Where do we find the will to displace families and schools and churches and businesses along the freeway corridors? Something that we can do in LAX is enhance the customer convenience. And when I've traveled to other airports, there is a customer convenience. And traveling in and out of LAX, it says, be there two hours for domestic, three hours for international flights. That doesn't include the two hours it takes to get to the airport because you've got to fight traffic to get there in the first place. So for a two-hour time, you're talking about leaving your home four hours before your flight. You're going international, you're going to wake up at 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning to get there for a flight. We are not a customer-friendly airport, I think we all agree to that. And when we fly that, and it's very recent, I flew through International Airport, we feel that, we feel that frustration that the passengers feel, that the business community feels. And I remember going through that airport before the security enhancements took place. And we know it's more cumbersome now for everyone. So I fully support this for the convenience of the traveling public. The fact is, people are going to travel, and if it's 56 million, or 65 million, or 100 million, we are not stopping our population growth. We know we have a housing crisis. Councilmember Garcetti has come up with the Housing Trust Fund to help accommodate that. We know we've overgrown in society, and the problem is, people love California, they love the climate, they love the convenience of Los Angeles, but they're frustrated with the travel, they're frustrated with the long commutes, and they're frustrated with LAX. And if we don't do this, the people are still going to come, and they're going to wait in line longer and longer and longer. So not doing anything is just going to inconvenience many more people. We can't stop the population, we can't stop them from coming to LAX, we can't say the airport's closed, we don't have enough airports for the population. And I support regionalization. And finally, when Palmdale-Lancaster, the Palmdale Airport opens up, when the population increases, then they will start to utilize that facility. But I understand it didn't work out because they don't have the travelers out of there. Ontario, that area of the region is building, that airport will enhance Riverside, San Bernardino, where they're building 71,000 homes, 71,000 homes. They're taking away the dairy farms and they're putting in homes. So 71,000 homes, that airport's going to be at capacity someday. If we don't do this, all we're going to find is more and more frustration. I support the labor movement, I support the union workers who are there. It does give you jobs, it does help your families, it helps with that environment. And over and above the jobs that it'll generate, it'll generate more jobs at the airport, and all of us who travel will be able to travel in comfort and convenience and not be as frustrated as we all are when we have to travel to Los Angeles International Airport. So I support this. Councilmember Sikowsky, I know that some people aren't supporting the hard work you've done on this.
Order, please, order, please. Mr. Zine, if I can ask you to conclude.
I will. In my former years, I would make an arrest, but now I can't do that. But thank you, Sergeant Arms, for taking action. And Councilmember Sikowsky, I want to compliment you and your staff, and I know that your staff has been very committed to this, you've been committed to this, and you've done the right thing.
Thank you.
For the people of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
I have a question. Have you provided a response to our motion asking you to begin to look at a regional approach to airport capacity in the region? That was a motion by Mr. Parks and myself about 70 days ago, and we received no response over that period?
I don't know that we have submitted a written response. However, if you'd like, we can give you a verbal response.
Why don't you give us a verbal outline? And we would hope that, given that it was submitted some 70 days ago, that we begin the process of drafting a proposal in that regard.
Absolutely. And I apologize that we have not submitted something in writing. We are actively engaged in master plans right now for Ontario Airport as well as LAX. We are beginning the master plan process at Palmdale, and we have a master plan that is actually down with city planning right now for Van Nuys. So we're looking at all of our airports at the same time. There are a number of things we're doing to support regional growth. We are doing air service marketing at Ontario to try and bring new service to that airport. We are also working hard to keep the costs of operating in Ontario down so that more carriers would want to be there, and they'll be providing lower fares to passengers, which should incentivize them to go there. We also are maintaining lower parking rates at Ontario again to try and get passengers to go out there and use that facility. I'm really happy to announce that on December 29th, we're going to start air service in Palmdale again. Scenic Air has committed to, not every day, but I think it's three days a week, they'll be flying to Las Vegas, North Las Vegas Airport, out of Palmdale. And our commission has allowed us to basically set up a pilot program for the next three years, which will reduce rates for any airline that wants to fly out of Palmdale. There are incentives for them to go up there. Right now, we're providing free rent, and hopefully, this will get more carriers up there, the market will get developed, and that airport will take off. Also, I think you are all aware that we have a flyaway program that we are supporting, and I think everyone sees the flyaways as parking facilities around the region that will deliver you to LAX. But that's not our whole vision. We're hoping that those flyaways in the future will serve other airports, not just LAWA's airports. Ideally, the Van Nuys flyway could serve Burbank, for example, and Long Beach, as well as Ontario, LAX, and hopefully Palmdale in the future. So we're looking ahead. We can't get ahead of the airlines because we can't control where they fly or what their routes are, but we're certainly trying to do everything we can to support them growing in those airports that we control.
What are we doing in terms of infrastructure investment? Spending 50 million, 100 million, a billion? Any idea? Projected?
Unfortunately, I don't have a projection of that. I will tell you that LAWA made a huge investment in Ontario recently in the new terminals that are out there, and right now, we're rebuilding a runway. There's sizable amount of capital.
Can you give me a ballpark number? I mean, one of the things, one of the things that has been raised over time with respect to a regional approach, you know, $3 billion worth of construction at Palmdale or Ontario could go a long way. Create good, middle-class jobs, pay prevailing wage, have a community benefit package associated with that. Is there any plans in the works now for an investment, a serious investment in any of those airports, other than what you've just shared with us?
I will, we will follow up with you on that. I will say that the master plan that is being looked at in Ontario will include some major physical investment, but I don't, we don't have a number on that sitting here today. I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, colleagues, for the discussion, and thank you for the hard work of LAWA and of the community on this. I rise again today in support of this. Is this a perfect plan? Absolutely not. Is it a necessary plan? Absolutely yes. And I think that we have a historic moment in which there is some, but not unanimous, community support, and we also have a plan that will make LAX safer than it is today, which is, I think, something very critical. I know Mr. Weiss has done a lot on airport safety, and that is part of the reason why this needs to be done now, in a way that our work is not done here today. In fact, any one of us who thinks with this vote, our plan is done and our work is done, I think we all recognize that is not the case, that we will have many more looks at this, and there is disagreement among this horseshoe about which elements, besides those initial green light ones, some of us want to see move forward. But nevertheless, this is critical. I want to ask a couple of questions and then make some concluding comments, if you can hold my time after the questions. First, the motion on LEED certification or some sort of environmental construction, which was very, I think, near and dear. We have a great person in you, Kim, because of your experience in Ontario, but two questions. One, can you kind of commit where, if we are to do construction where LEED standards, and LEED standards for those of you, it's kind of environmental certification of making sure that we build this with the best kind of environmental materials and least energy waste possible. Where LEED standards exist, say, if we are to do an office building or something onsite as part of this, can we commit to that? And where LEED standards don't exist, what sort of commitment can we make today that will ensure a process that will make sure this is the greenest airport ever built in this country?
Well, I think you've made a very good point there, that there are not currently existing LEED standards for airport terminals, which is one of our conflicts here. Let me start by saying, we totally support the LEED's goals with regard to environmental efficiency and sustainability. And in fact, as you mentioned, in Ontario, we did a number of things to make sure that that was an environmentally sensitive and sustainable building. Not only were the mechanical systems designed to be environmentally friendly, but there are a lot of passive things we did, like north-facing clear-story windows to get natural light within the building and light shelves. We used low-emitting materials. So there are a whole series of things that we did, and we are committed that as we move ahead to do any projects, whether they be at LAX or Ontario, we will continue to try and meet the goals of the LEED's program.
Okay. And anything that we can do to work with you to bring some of those parties to the table, make sure that we have that, I think that we can set a standard and work with LEEDs and other groups that have established those standards and see if we can't do that, that will have an impact not just on LAX, but all airports in this country. Secondly, what sort of apprenticeship programs can we write into the project labor agreement? As we have great evidence here today of folks who are going through apprenticeship programs right now, who are with us, I know, what can we do in terms of making that possibly a part of the PLA as well, in a stronger way? If you could hold my time.
Actually, there is, in fact, a jobs apprenticeship program. Bill Bruce, who is our Director of Administration, is coming up to join us, and perhaps he can go into some details. But what I will tell you is that all of the contractors who apply for work at LAX in this program are going to have to commit to a percentage of apprenticeship hiring. We have been talking to the Building Trades Unions, they have existing apprenticeship programs that we plan to utilize, and it's through the CDD WIB program that we will indeed be identifying and screening potential job applicants.
Yes, we will be working with the Community Development Department and its workforce development centers with regard to setting up and interfacing with the Building Trades for apprenticeship programs. We envision that what we will be doing is funding pre-apprenticeship programs, drawing people from the impacted communities, getting them ready so that they can transition into the apprenticeship programs that are actually run by the Building Trades. So we're working to mesh our Community Benefits Agreement into the PLA that will govern the construction.
Okay. Thank you. Just some concluding thoughts. Mr. Villarrealosa and others have spoken about regional plan, and I think it's incumbent upon us to not only be looking at those expenditures long-term, but I would ask our allies, our brothers and sisters in the union movement, when we have, some of you may live in Orange County, other places, when we have the opportunity to have political will enact a regional solution, when there's something like El Toro and other things that are on the table, we need that support to make sure that not any one airport has to bear the burden. We are supporting you here today, we know that you will be there for us today, but we have people who live in Palmdale, we have people who live in Orange County, live in those places that when it comes down to those public meetings and somebody may be looking at expanding an airport or putting an airport down there, we need those voices to be heard just as loud and just as clear as they are today in those meetings, too, if we're ever to truly have a regional solution. We have to continue looking at the environmental impact. And I think it was a good point that actually Denny made about the infrastructure being overtaxed. This is one infrastructure project, but it can't be in a vacuum. We need to put men and women to work on infrastructure projects, not just like the schools now, not just like with Proposition O, not just with LAX, but across the board, with the roads, with a public transportation infrastructure that'll actually make this city livable again. There's nothing like an airport. It evokes the strongest emotions in us, the nostalgia of leaving home, of coming back home, of people who haven't seen each other for years when you're in the rival's gate, and people hugging each other who haven't seen each other in a decade, family reunifications, all this stuff. I was in the airport last night thinking about this, and it is one of the most incredible places that we have. But if we don't make it something that is modern, something that works, and if we don't actually invest in the infrastructure around it, we will literally grind to a stop. We have to make sure that the federal government, when we look at long lines, has stuff like giving us the number of people TSA that we need so that we don't have long lines. We have Republicans in the Congress right now who oppose doing that because they don't want good union jobs, which is what the TSA jobs are. We have to be a loud voice, saying we need as many people there to move people through the line safely so that we don't concentrate people if a terrorist does strike. So our work is not done here today, but this plan is critical. It is necessary, and it's one that we need to move forward with today. Our work is not done, but today we take one more brave step forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcetti. And we recognize Councilmember Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make some comments on two issues. One, I guess, three issues. One, the concern I have is that although we say this airport plan is for security, yet we hear from Rand, at least on the initial report, and we're waiting for further, is that it is not a particularly safer project. We hear from issues from the county board of supervisors that they're opposing, based on their land use, on the premise that they are looking for a regional solution. And yet, we're insistent that we're going to put $11 billion into one location as opposed to taking those union jobs and trying to build not only a regional air transportation, but a regional grounds. but a regional ground transportation system connecting at least our four airports. That's where the $9 to $11 billion should go, in my judgment. And then, we also hear about the community benefit package. And many people that talked with me over the weekend were amazed that LAX, a city department, would be negotiating with, and I'm sure people that have all the great intentions, but what was highlighted was to negotiate with representatives from Lenox and Inglewood primarily for areas that 95% of it was city area. But yet, those same people that have met with Mr. Ritchie and other members of the department for the last several decades, that still haven't gotten their houses insulated and their schools insulated, are the ones that are saying, why would you be meeting with representatives outside the city when you haven't served the people who live under those flight paths? And we still are using the 1992 noise chart that they almost ran all of us out of the room when it was shown at one of our meetings. But those are the inconsistencies about this plan, that we're moving forward, in my judgment, against all of the research. We're also showing that the prospects, that lawsuits are coming. And so we'd spend our money on defending ourselves just to say we had the plan, when in fact, we could really use that money on building a regional system. And so those are the conflicts that I see as we move forward on this proposal. It's not about not having jobs, it's where we place the jobs. It's not about not having union jobs, it's that a union worker can be just as viable on a ground or air transportation system on a regional plan as they are at one location. And I think that folks that are here from Orange County has done a very remarkable thing. They're here applauding us getting ready to strangle our community, but yet their voices were closed and silent when El Toro took the airport off the market because they didn't want this form of traffic transportation, didn't care about union jobs. But yet, they're applauding us for looking at how we will strangle our city for the next several decades. And so those are the things that I think are the inconsistencies that come from my community that's lived under the flight path for decades, but yet have not gotten the relief. But yet, when we talk multimillion-dollar packages for community benefit, yet we're talking to entities outside the city when you could have resolved their problems forthcoming and years in the past. And so I'll talk again because my time is running out, but those are the inconsistencies that we have difficulty in reconciling.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President, to the Department of Airports and to everyone that's here. It's very important, all the work that you've done in the past, to move forward with this plan. And I want to thank Ms. Misakowski, who represents the district, and Mr. Cardenas, who was Chair of the committee, who made some eloquent statements as you spoke about the issues as it relate to it. This particular time, members, and I like to go back, who sat in these chairs in the late '70s when they discussed the double-decking of the LAX in the advent of the coming of the Olympic Games? They made a decision to make that a better airport. Who sat in the chairs in the late '50s to discuss about the rebuilding of LAX or moving it from Sepulveda West to what is this forum? Someone sat in this chair. They had to make a long-range decision. And yes, members, a regional approach is very important, but the modern aviation field, which is a surprise to all, it's not all freight in one plane and people in another. It's a combined effort. And the infrastructure that we've developed now is centered around what is Los Angeles International Airport. And right now, there are things that are not as safe as we would want it. I was driving down Fifth Street the night of that horrible crash in the late '80s, early '90s, Continental, it ran into a city building. It was a horrible crash, and I remember the call over the city radio. I don't want us to experience that. We should not waste any time. We should make this airport safer and more modern, and also the experience. It's too bad in the 9/11 day that you can't go out to the airport and say goodbye to your loved one anymore. That's gone. That part of life is. You got to go to Union Station, but you can't even get up trackside, you just got a ticket now. So all that's changing. But I think it's very important to modernize it, for safety first, as we advent. Let me ask a point, too. One thing I don't want to lose for our city in the future is planes flying to Las Vegas, flying to Dallas, flying to Denver, and not stopping in Los Angeles, flying to San Francisco. Tell me about the capabilities of long-range flights.
I think that's a very important question. We, just as the aircrafts that fly into LAX have changed dramatically since LAX was first built in the '60s, so now we have to adapt LAX for the future aircraft, and that's really the A380s. Not only are we going to make airfield modifications, but the renovation we are about to take on with the Tom Bradley Terminal will add two contact gates for these new planes. And then, one of the green-lighted projects in the master plan is to modify the west side of the Tom Bradley Terminal to take an additional 10 or 12 large aircraft. So we are preparing for that.
But these planes could choose to fly to Las Vegas. They could choose to fly to Texas. Is that correct?
Yes, they could.
You know, members, we're the gateway to the world, and I don't want to lose that ability to the gateway. I want to make sure it's a good gate, a strong gate, a safe gate, and a welcoming gate for people, that they come here to this city. And I also would like to explore, as we are, and Ms. Misakowski, the point you made about a deputy director coming back here and reporting every year is a very important addition to this, that someone's going to be on that aspect to oversee that. It's so important. I just wanted to thank everybody who was involved and ask for an high vote because it's so important to not waste any more time to mitigate the problems of our adjacent cities, to deal with those issues, but also to move forward to safely modernize this airport. And lastly, as an MTA board member, I'm working on issues for us regionally for transportation to make it easier and to move people out of their cars off the 405 into alternative modes of transit so we could relieve the traffic congestion, not just for the 405 and the San Diego Freeway, but for Hawthorne and for Inglewood and every city surrounding that, including El Segundo. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Parkes for a second time.
Mike, final comment. I just wanted to make sure that we can expect, I guess, that report that Mr. Vieragosa talked about, that sometime in the future, to look at our regionalization truly, in which we can have our four airports being viewed as one system, as opposed to looking at this hodgepodge of activity that we're dealing with, with master plans that are not connected. And hopefully, in some way, with the, looking at the airports at one system, we can look at the SCAG reports for what's already been approved as a regional transportation system to see how they may be in conformance with each other, so that we can come up with a real overall plan for the future. Because my concern is that we have no ability internally to stop the 78 million passengers if the FAA sends them to us. The only way we can survive as a city is to be able to formulate and redirect workload and maybe reconfigure cargo versus passengers as what airports that we deem appropriate is the only salvation we have. Because if we continue at the rate we're going, we can be at 78 or 90 million passengers without any aid from FAA if we don't clean up our system and redirect our efforts. And if we spend all of our money at LAX, I don't know how we'll fund the rest of it, but we certainly need to have a plan because the growth in this city and all the other things that we're drawing people to the city, we're going to need a regional plan in our lifetime. So I'd hope we can get that back so that we can see just how viable it is as we move forward.
We will do that.
Mr. Labange for a second time.
Question there. On the 78 map, that's 7 million, annual million passengers, okay? Is that a, when people say that's, is that a true number, or is that just a, like, I'd like everybody to go 35 miles an hour down Melrose Avenue, and they go 42?
We are designing a facility to that capacity.
To 78?
78.9 million passengers a year.
Now, we've got 78.1. What happens? They get turned around at Sepulveda, or do they, what legally happens? Nothing, right? It's not a real law. The federal government's not going to allow us to do that. The FAA is not going to allow us to do that.
No. What happens is, once, if you were to get more passengers than that, we get back into ground transportation gridlock, we get back into bad passenger service level, the airport starts disintegrating again.
But I think, because this is a great public discussion, and many of the neighborhood councils have talked about this throughout, you know, the issue I brought up about the combined aircraft with both freight and passenger, what MAP means, what 78 means with the FAA, you know, there's a lot of confusion. I hope there's a great public information campaign by the Department of Airports and staff that gets that out there as we progress on this. And when Mr. Parkes said about our money, it's the Department of Airports' responsibility by charter, not the city council per se, correct? Could you explain that for the public?
Yes. All of the funds that are going to be used to modify LAX are either LAWA funds, which are segregated from the city, or there'll be federal dollars that we receive through grants.
No one from the San Fernando Valley, no one from Los Angeles, Metropolitan, no one from San Pedro will be paying directly as a taxpayer. But if they use the airport, there may be a fee that they would pay for their ticket because the airlines pay. They pay their federal taxes, and they don't get their money back from Washington, but they do by way of maybe some dollars they would spend here.
Right. And if I could just clarify one other thing, Ontario's fund is even separate from LAX. So dollars we spend at LAX are not dollars that we would be spending at Ontario. Those are separate funds.
Correct. And everybody talks about $11 billion project. Is that up to $11 billion, or could it be less? What is the number? Just so people...
Well, the $11 billion that we've talked about includes all of the projects that are currently yellow-lighted.
Right.
So it would require that all of the yellow-lighted projects be approved for us...
What's the dollar value for the green-lighted project?
$3 billion.
$3 billion. That's very reasonable. Okay, I thank you very much for answering those questions, and I hope you do, if you could put a little side note, to have a community outreach campaign to the general populace, how we look at that. And also, too, members, I just want to say something. We talk about other cities or Orange County. We have a responsible ability as Los Angeles. We have a responsibility for those who sat here before, who built this city, to make sure we have a modern facility. And we don't have any borders that have any checkpoints that stop people from other cities coming into our city, or using our airport, or using our Union Station, or using our port. And that's what this is about. There's a regional need, but also, you know, I just don't want, I think it's important to look at, we're all in it together, from San Bernardino to the ocean, from Orange County through Ventura County, and we have to find a way to solve that problem. But everybody has a right to that as a public facility, just like they have a right to walk into this building. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Are there any other members of the council wishing to be heard at this time on these items? If not, do we have any objection to taking a collective vote as opposed to individual votes on items four through 11? Seeing none, all members are in their seats. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll on items four through 11. Okay, that's what I had asked. Let's, instead of reopening the roll, excuse me, instead of closing the roll, let's take one of the, let's take the items one at a time. Item number four. Let's open the roll on item number four. Roll is open. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes, one no.
That is approved. Item number five.
Excuse me, Mr. President, the ordinances will go over for one week.
Correct. That's items four and five are ordinances.
Yeah, I wasn't recorded on item four.
Okay, let's allow Mr. Weiss to be a no vote on that. Doesn't change the outcome, and Mr. Parkes as well, does not change the outcome on that. Ordinances do carry over for one week.
Mr. President, can you have the clerk read the item off, please? Thank you.
Sure. Read what item four was, and then what item five is.
Okay, the first item, item number four, was continued consideration of planning and land use management committee report, ordinances, first consideration and resolutions, and that's relative to the overrule of the LA County Airport Land Use Commission determination and other related matters.
Okay, and the vote on that was?
And the vote on that was 12 to 3.
12 ayes, 3 no's. We now proceed to item number five. Madam Clerk.
Item number five is continued consideration of Commerce, Energy, and Natural Resources Committee Report and ordinances and resolutions, and that's relative to the LA County Airport Land Use Management, excuse me, Land Use Commission determination and other related matters.
Is that clear? Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes, 3 no's.
Okay, that ordinance also carries over for one week. Next item, please.
Next item is item number six, and that's continued consideration of planning, land use management, and Commerce, Energy, and Natural Resources Committee Report, and relative to appeal filed by City of El Segundo on the final EIR for the LAX master plan improvements.
Okay. Please open the roll on item number six. Roll is open. Members have an opportunity to vote. Let's close the roll and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
That is approved.
Item number seven is continued consideration of planning, land use management committee report and appeal by Jerry Fullwood, CAO of Culver City on tentative track 54407.
Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes, 3 no's.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number eight is continued consideration of Plum Report and appeal filed by Jerry Fullwood, CAO Culver City on tentative track 54408.
Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes, 3 no's.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number nine is continued consideration of Plum Report regarding appeal by Jerry Fullwood, CAO Culver City on tentative track 54409.
Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes, 3 no's.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number 10 is Commerce, Energy, and Natural Resources Committee Report and Communication from the Chair of EQ Committee relative to review of environmental justice mitigation measures proposed by the City of Inglewood, and that's pursuant to motion Perry Misakowski.
Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Okay, and last but not least, item 11.
Item 11 is Commerce, Energy, and Natural Resources Committee Report and Communication from the Chair of Plum relative to certification of additional addenda to the final EIR and adoption of additional findings and staff report on the LAX master plan.
Okay. Please open the roll. Members, the roll is open. All members have an opportunity to vote. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes, one no.
That is approved. Okay, Ms. Misakowski.
With on items six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11. The other two, items four and five, are ordinances and do have to go over till next week.
Fourth with on items six through 11. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 18 was called special by Councilmember Labange.
Mr. Labange.
Members, this is a matter concerning Los Angeles International Airport, which you have talked about moving the Green Line station connection at Century and aviation with the opportunity. And I know Ms. Day, I know Mr. Ritchie, I've worked with on this. We toured the facility again. Could you just give the council an update, Ms. Day, or Mr. Ritchie, whoever you choose?
Yes, sir. We, Jim Ritchie, from Los Angeles World Airport's Deputy Executive Director, we support your initiative. We have, in the early planning stage of the program, we identified the need for the Green Line connection to the south. Our plan reflects that. Likewise, the placement of the ground transportation improvements to the airport is adjacent to a very strategic rail line that, as that matures with the MTA development, we see great opportunities working with the MTA to consider future Green Line connections, whether it's along aviation in a couple different situations.
It gives us an opportunity to place in the future. And I think, you know, and again, when I talk about who sat here before, they made a decision that the Green Line did not go to the airport. How wrong was that decision? The Green Line should go to the airport. This brings us closer to that aspect of it because it puts us right. And what is going to be the intersection between the, what was an old Santa Fe line and what was the shuttle, which is to be created through the new standards into the LAX? I think it's so important because every major airport in the world, you get off a plane, you go down an escalator, you get in a tube, you go down, and you're in the heart of London, and you're looking for fish and chips. And that's how fast it happens. And I want that same thing here in Los Angeles. So you can get on a Green Line and go to any place in LA. There's too many different varieties of food eaten in LA, but it'll go every which way. So I just want to thank you. I also want to thank Mr. Vieragosa, who is the Chair of the Committee, which we sent this through, and also Ms. Misakowski and her staff, who was assisting in this effort here to try to make the right statement. So as we capture this opportunity for the future, because, believe me, if we have transit, rail transit into this... rail transit into this facility in the future, it will take cars off of the Century Freeway, off of the 405, off of the Santa Monica, and off of all the other connectors so people can get to safely to the airfield. Thank you very much on that.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Tom for being passionate about this and Antonio in terms of the Transportation Committee for moving it forward. Members, and particularly our members who are on the MTA. The MTA, as you are probably now aware, is shortly to begin its long-range planning, a review of where they want to be. I met with the MTA staff and particularly in light of this motion, said not only the elements of connection between a Green Line and a people mover and those kind of smooth, seamless kind of transit issues, but literally, let's start looking at a union station direct down lines that are available, it could be called the Red Line again, it could extend. And the MTA people were very, very interested in that, said, let's look, because if we can start putting together the capability of LAWA, the capability of MTA, even though something today is not in the 20-year long-range plan, as we are redoing the 20-year long-range plan, and they see enthusiasm, interest, commitment, and I've mentioned to my fellow MTA colleagues that there is now interest in terms of the new West Side Council of Governments to also support a West Side line out. We have exposition as the first phase, we can have exposition as a second line, but now I think we get the commitment, the entirety of the West Side community that is faced with impacted traffic, has LAX, has some big regional other institutions, whether it's UCLA or otherwise, the 405, that we can start pooling that talent of the Department of Transportation, Los Angeles World Airport, MTA, to really look at a West Side long-range plan. And those things, long range, can move up more quickly if there is that commitment and consensus. So to my colleague, my fellow council colleagues who are MTA representatives, it is current, it is fresh, and it's available to start doing not only the Green Line connection, but other potential avenues of real transit that are part of the whole infrastructure that we heard about in the plan. So thank you for really focusing and pushing on that realm, and I think we can push that a lot farther.
Thank you. Ms. Misakowski, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. And just to echo some of the thoughts, when I was in Transportation Committee for a brief stint when I first came into council, we were dealing with the issue of banded taxi drivers. And we were able to see how vulnerable many of the communities on the east side of San Fernando, the west, the east side of the city, the south, central LA, central LA. And essentially, without that kind of a network, we don't have a direct line to the airport. Many folks who use these facilities are vulnerable to these kinds of abuses. So at many different levels, we need this. And I just, again, applaud my colleagues, Councilmember Labange and Viera Gosa for bringing this together. But we need to be comprehensive, not only from a regional airport point of view, from a regional transit point of view. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. I believe Mr. Viera Gosa has a motion on this.
Yes, I do. First of all, I want to thank Councilmember Labange. As Chair of the Committee, I wanted to respect the fact that I knew that at a minimum, there were, the vast majority of you supported this proposal. And so, but I, as you know, don't support a consolidated baggage facility. I support the green light projects, not the red light, or the yellow light projects, not the, well, one of the colors. And so what I'd like to do is bifurcate it, because the first part speaks to connecting the Green Line Center to the consolidated baggage facility, which of course I don't support, as I've already articulated. The second part looks at alternative routes and connecting possibly the Green Line to an exposition line, which I do support. And so I'd like to bifurcate those two parts of the motion, if I may, and urge a no vote on the first and an I vote on the second.
Mr. Labange, would you want to...
Mr. Ritchie, can you explain that, just so, and as Mr. Viera Gosa said, I have no problem because I share some of your opinions about those projects there. But this gets the LA Department of Airports to study this location for a potential site for the Green Light extension. But Mr. Viera Gosa says it, what words did need to be struck? Is there anything, could I have a little help on that?
They're not the ones to do it, it would be the clerk.
No, but I want the staff to answer from a technical standpoint, and then the clerk could strike the words, I know that.
Yes, I believe the issue that you have raised is, in the master plan, one of the green lights, the early green light projects, identifies the connection with the existing Green Line that comes in and adjacent to aviation. That Intermodal Transportation Center site at that area does tie into a people mover that goes into the central terminal area. That's one component of it. The councilman's motion is to study other opportunities to take advantage of the existing BNSF rail line for something we haven't looked at, but certainly could in the future. And that would be the tying into another Green Line station, possibly with the utilization of that existing north-south rail line. So we would support studying both those initiatives.
Which is why I want to bifurcate the issue, because I don't want my motion to imply in any way that I support a consolidated baggage.
I support you to bifurcate it, but I'm not going to vote with you. All right, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Labange, do you want to speak about anything further? Okay, Ms. Misakowski.
That's good.
Okay, Ms. Misakowski.
Item two recommendation, I think the majority want to vote yes on both, but those who don't want to vote, at least the separate vote allows that expression.
Thank you, okay. Madam Clerk.
The first vote then is on item number 18, recommendation number one.
Okay. And we spell that out for the council with the recommendation?
Yes, that was to request that when the LAWA conducts the required yellow light traffic studies on the Ground Transportation Center in the proposed LA Airport Master Plan, that LAWA work with LA County MTA and include the necessary analysis for the establishment of an additional Green Line Station.
Okay. Everybody clear with that? All right. Please open the roll on the item. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes, 3 no's.
Okay. That is approved. Next set of recommendations we'll take together, you don't have to enumerate those, I think. You can take those together. Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
That is approved as well. Okay. Fourth with on those? Fourth with for Mr. Labange. All right. Thank you very much for the folks who are here on the airport items. We now have item 52.
Mr. President, next item is 52, and that was being held on the desk, but I believe all the questions have been answered.
Mr. Padilla, yes.
Questions have been answered. Today's the deadline, the clerk needs to act and get our march ballot ready to go.
Okay. So we'll go forthwith with this? Okay. If it passes, open the roll, please. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
That is approved, and let's move that forthwith as well. Okay? Thank you all who came for the airport items here today. We could ask you to...
Mr. President.
And let's do 53 forthwith as well, if there's no objection. Yes, Ms. Misakowski.
I'd also like those parts of items four and five today that are not related to the ordinances, all to go, also to go forthwith. So only the ordinances will go over.
Okay. The ordinances will go over, and the non-ordinance items on four and five, there's no objection, will go forthwith as well. Okay. Next order of business.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Let's post and let's refer those.
Their excuses on the desk. Councilmember Perry requests to be excused Wednesday, December 8th, to leave at 11:00 AM for city business that meets council policy.
Okay, she's excused.
Council President Padilla requests to be excused Wednesday, December 8th, to leave at 11:30 for city business that also meets council policy.
Okay, he is excused as well.
Councilmember Ludlow requests to be excused Friday, December 10th, for personal business that meets council policy.
Mr. Ludlow's excused.
Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused Wednesday, December 8th, and Wednesday, January 12th, to leave at 12, excuse me, 11:15, and those are for personal business. Those both meet council policy.
Okay, that excuse is granted.
Councilmember Viera Gosa requests to be excused Friday, December 10th, for personal business, a motion is required.
Okay. Mr. Reyes moves, Mr. Zion seconds.
Councilmember Smith requests to be excused Tuesday, January 4th, for personal business that meets council policy.
Okay, Mr. Smith is excused.
And that clears the desk.
That clears the desk. Okay, colleagues, announcements now? Time for announcements? Mr. Parks? If I can ask everybody, please to kindly take your conversations to the outside of the chambers so we can finish with the meeting. And now it's time for announcements, and Mr. Parks has the microphone.
I just want to make one public announcement. The Budget and Finance Committee meeting will be held today at 6:00 PM at the Epic Center, 3980 South Menlo, primarily to get community input as to next year's budget process. And so that's 6:00 PM this evening at 3980 South Menlo.
Great, thank you. Again, that's Budget and Finance Committee meeting tonight. Any other announcements, colleagues? If there are no other announcements, can I please ask everybody to rise for adjourning Can everybody in council chambers please rise for our adjourning motions? Thank you. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. Members, I would ask that we adjourn our meeting today in the memory of Bill Stivers. Bill passed away at his home on November 30th. He was 86. Bill Stivers was a much-loved and respected member of the Pepperdine community. From 1962 through 2000, Bill served Pepperdine with distinction as a professor and coordinator of modern languages. He in fact spoke seven languages himself. He was one of the original elders at the Malibu Church of Christ, serving for 40 years. He was also greatly involved in Camp Stivers, a mission in San Felipe, Mexico, which was named for his dedication and benevolence for the Spanish-speaking people of Mexico, the United States, and Central America. Bill attended Pepperdine while teaching Bible class at the only Spanish-speaking congregation in Los Angeles. He served his country during World War II, later returning to Southern California to earn his master's degree from USC. He then went on to Quito, Ecuador, to attend Central University of Quito, earning his PhD. Bill is survived by his beloved Francis, to whom he was married for 57 years. He also survived, he is survived by his daughter Nina and his son Chris. Chris and his wife Sandy are both Pepperdine alumni, and they have three daughters. He was preceded in death by his son Stephen. He was my father's best friend and my father's very first chief of staff when he became a county supervisor in 1952. He and my father had a lifetime friendship and took many trips together down to San Felipe, personally delivering resources to the people. I'll never forget the time that my father and Bill drove an older model Goodhue ambulance themselves all the way down to San Felipe to deliver to this city their very first ambulance. A memorial service will be held this Saturday at Pepperdine. He was a great friend of my family.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Harold Johnson. Mr. Johnson was an original member of the Jefferson-Buckingham-Adams Crenshaw Block Club, founded 25 years ago, and served as its first recording secretary. He was a tireless advocate for the neighborhood by getting palm trees cut, graffiti removed, and cleaning up fenced lots. Mr. Johnson was a very generous man, always trying to figure out a way to make his neighborhood a better place to live. He was also trying to help. In fact, he would get out of his way to help you if you knew, if he knew that you were trying to help yourself. He leaves behind a beloved wife, a son, and a grandson. One of the community members, Ruben O'Neil, stated that the community has lost a wonderful person, a truly wonderful person, and I know that I am going to miss him, as will the greater community. He will be deeply missed. Church services were held yesterday at Phillips Temple, Phillips CME Temple.
Thank you. Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to have the council adjourn, and I think all members will want to be part of this, in the memory of Tom Redden, ex-LAPD chief. He died this weekend after some complications with an illness. But he was well-known as perhaps one of the first and of the innovative police chiefs to represent LAPD. He introduced actually community policing and went on to other things. He actually served rather, after a long career in LAPD, only two years, I think just under two years as chief. But during that time, he was known to create, particularly after the conservative chiefs of William Parker and others, that really wanted to become less militaristic, less institutionalized, and really create a modern, very progressive LAPD. He was the one who introduced computerized dispatching, upgrading communication technology, and improving training and pay. But more than anything, he has remembered in just that two years of service, is really profoundly introducing and strongly creating a commitment to community-based policing. He really was a progressive who really moved and thought that a modern police force in a modern urban city should not follow the militaristic standard, but really a different kind of model. He was a gifted communicator, beloved by police officers, being part of police officers, gave a regular, I don't know if it was monthly or every other month, newsletter from himself to the members, really, really well-recognized and well-respected in LAPD. He is survived by his wife Betty Jane of 67 years, a son Michael, a daughter Nancy Keenholz, eight grandchildren, and several great-grandchildren. Memorial services are pending, and I'm sure LAPD will let us know when that occurs.
Thank you. All members on that. Okay. Mr. Parks?
I would just like to comment on Tom Redden. I think the funeral is going to be set for 10 o'clock Friday at the Police Academy. That's what we heard this morning. But 10:45. But I just want to say, having worked a couple of years, unfortunately, he only spent two years as chief of police before he went on to broadcasting. But he did revitalize the department primarily in the community relations area, and certainly put a number of things in place that future chiefs such as Ed Davis and also Daryl Gates continue to implement. But he was a change agent in something that LAPD will always be appreciative of what he was involved with. He's had a long illness with Parkinson's disease and unfortunately succumbed December the 4th.
And Mr. Garcetti, just add, there was a constituent of the 4th District, the Redden family, 67 years, what a wonderful union could that be of anyone to be married, and his wife Betty, who were both good civically minded. And I remember as a very young, young person, the transformation in this city from the turbulent times of the mid-'60s to when Chief Tom Redden came and his discussion here, and he was extremely popular, especially, unfortunately, he didn't serve long enough, because he is mentioned by Cindy and Bernard, they had that ability to communicate with people and inspire. It was a transformation time for the Los Angeles Police Department, and I remember how he discussed things and then his efforts in broadcasting. But Tom Redden was a giant of a man, 6'4", 215, but always very communicative in his ability to send a message. And I think it's fortunate we all adjourn in his memory. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zion.
I'd like to comment on Chief Redden. When I joined the Police Department in 1968, he was the chief, signed my identification card. I remember the graduation. He was a towering man, 6'4", a very impressive individual, but very calm in his tone. His demeanor was very, very professional, and he didn't pound the drum and toot the horn. He was very, very professional. And I remember name tags, when they started name tags in the Police Department, and officers didn't want to wear name tags. They thought that would be some kind of a travesty. But he really took LAPD into a new arena, as it's continued to a different arena, into a more community-oriented arena. But I do remember that D-card, and I only had an opportunity to meet him one time, and that was at the graduation back in 1968. May he rest in peace.
Thank you. Any other adjourning motions, colleagues? If not, Madam Clerk, oh yeah, sorry, Mr. Zion has another one.
I have two adjourning motions. The first one is for Lee Casey, passed away November 28th. Lee Casey, 75 years of age, of West Hills, was the owner of Casey's Tavern. Casey's passion for Dixieland and classical jazz prompted the retired aerospace worker to buy the Canoga Park Bar. He was born January 19th, 1929, Cleveland, Ohio, a veteran of the Air Corps and the Army. Worked at Rockodyne's Santa Susana Field Laboratory, Litton Industries, and Teledyne. Passionate about jazz, golf, and reading. He reserved the word love for Jean, his wife, for 52 years. Casey was a great husband, father, and friend, will be truly missed. He's survived by his wife Jean, his children Karen, Kerrigan, Kevin Casey, and Kathy Casey, and six grandchildren. And my other adjourning motion is for James L. Pruitt, passed away November 29th. James L. Pruitt, resident of Glendale, California, was born May 22nd, 1925, in Bishop, Virginia. Mr. Pruitt was the father of Senior Inspector Tom Pruitt from the Department of Building and Safety. He served in World War II in the Army Air Corps. After 32 years of service with the City of Los Angeles, he retired in August 1983 as a chief inspector from the Department of Building and Safety, loving father, and a great friend who will be truly missed. He's survived by his children Tom Pruitt, Marjorie Kennedy, and Steve Sawyer. May James L. Pruitt rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Any other adjourning motions? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. And if Alan Alietti is still listening, I said it would be finished at 12:47, we're two minutes off. Thanks.[1765.44][1765.44][music]